Good evening, welcome to the May 13th, 2014, meeting of the Manchester Town Council. First order of business, and usually I have to get corrected for this, because I try to move right past it, is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2015, can't believe it's 2015 already, general fund budget. So this was introduced a month ago, and has been available, so we have, do you hear a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion that we open the public hearing on the FY15 general fund budget.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Is anybody here today to comment on the budget? Trace, anybody sign up specifically for that?
No.
Going once, going twice. No public comments, take a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing on the FY15 general fund budget.
I'll second it.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. First order of business, approval of the April 8th, 2014 minutes. You have a copy in front of you, also electronic.
I make a motion to approve the April 8th, 2014 minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yeah.
Next, you should have a copy of the March 2014 and April 2014 check registers.
Yes.
So entertain a motion to receive the check registers.
I make a motion.
I think we need to do both together, we've done that before, right?
Okay, I'll make a motion, we accept the March 2014 treasuries report and the April 2014 check register.
And I'll second the motion.
Motion is second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mayor's report, we have a couple of things today. First, the June meeting, so ordinarily our meetings are, second Tuesday every month, we have an alternate meeting on the fourth Wednesday of every month. Due to, we won't get into all the details, but we have to have a meeting, we can't wait until the end of June to have a meeting with the fiscal year switching over. And the MML convention this year is moved due to the primary election in June, and three of us, I believe, are going to the MML convention, which is a good event. So therefore, we're going to move, we're making the announcement now, I think we've already advertised, I hope we will be advertising. Okay, so, everybody on board with moving the meeting in June, the regularly scheduled meeting to June 3rd, which is one week before, and then we'll get that information out, which is a change. The town office here will be closed on Monday, May 26th, Memorial Day. We have a new town website, so ManchesterMD.gov, it was ManchesterMD.org, it's now switched over, so you can check that out, pay your bills, see everybody's pretty faces. And then, last but certainly not least, we have a certificate of appreciation tonight for Ms. Sharon Hughes, and we have some people accompanying her. Few pieces of information, Nature Center started 19 years ago, approximately 19 years ago, Ms. Hughes has been with them for 17 years, which is amazing.
Yeah.
She announced her resignation recently, she's done many jobs over at Nature Center, including, certainly not limited to, chairing Easter Adventure and Spring Fest events, which are great events, helping to develop the master plan, recently put together historical review of all the years of Nature Center, and an updated business plan, serving as treasurer, developed the most of the Nature Center's forms, created and administered the website, designed the center's logo and letterhead, and served as chair for a number of years. So, thank you for all of these services. Before you sit down, I know you got all the way back. We have...
A certificate of appreciation.
Some auto appreciation.
Thank you.
That is all for the mayor's report, we'll move into the town administrative report. Steve?
Okay, good evening, mayor and council members of the community. We'll go ahead and start with the April 2014 administrative report. There's been no change on either the Sheetz project or our SHA projects. With our Maryland Emergency Administration grant, we have two additional projects which were approved, and both these projects are our wastewater treatment plant, and both are energy efficient heating systems. By the way, through this phase, we were able to obtain $37,000, and we completed three projects, the two that I just mentioned, and also the energy study. The Civil War Heritage Trail Grant, there's been no change on that, and hopefully we'll get approval in July. Our Victory Street Town Hall Police Station project, the site was surveyed, we met with our design architect on Wednesday, May the 7th, and we discussed the first draft. We did receive the second draft today. If anyone's interested in seeing that, see me after the meeting, and I'll be able to share that with you. I have been approached in regards to residents that live on York Street in regards to the truck traffic. Actually, Chief Hess and I are looking into this issue, and hopefully we can, you'll hear something back from us over the next several months on that. Code enforcement in rental housing, as I mentioned in my report last month, the town continues to make aggressive moves at certain locations throughout the town in regards to code violations, and currently we're working with many different agencies throughout the county to combat these problems. Under miscellaneous items, I want to thank Michelle Wilder and Diane Knodt for attending the April 23rd WRCC meeting with me, for me, the FEMA meeting. Kelly and I met with FEMA reps on May the 2nd in regards to reimbursement for the February 12th and 13th snowstorm, and I want to commend Kelly on the fine job she did on keeping the records for this event. We did find a glitch in our personnel policy in regards to meals for our employees while they're working on duty, so hopefully we'll get that straightened out, we will not be reimbursed for that. Also, we're currently in the beginning stages of applying for $100,000 Community Legacy Grant for some revitalization projects. I turned Jared Schumacher loose on that, so hopefully over the next several months, you'll hear some more information about that from me. I want to thank Gino DePalmer on spearheading a Main Street beautification project in regards to the flowers in the planter in front of BB&amp;T Bank, and also he's working on the possibility of additional planters on Main Street, and I want to thank him for that. Any questions on the administrative report?
Steve, you know, I've heard discussions, it seems like it goes beyond just disturbance and inconvenience for residents on York Street, but there's been some damage possibly caused by...
That's correct.
...by the overuse?
If you take a hard look at York Street, York Street was not constructed to handle the type of tractor trailer traffic that it's getting. And you'll be able to see, you know, the stress cracks, we had a water main break back in December, I believe, which could be attributed to that. You know, we've been fielding questions and concerns from the residents probably over the last several months, maybe longer, about the amount of truck traffic that does use that, so we have to investigate that further.
Steve, when you're talking about investigating, are you looking at weight restrictions, you're looking at no truck traffic signs?
Could be a number of different things, the possibility of weight restrictions. We want to get a handle on the actual traffic that's actually using York Street.
Just trucks, or in totality?
Everything, everything. So, I think either we can do it ourselves, or we could actually work with a group from the county that could assist us on that, through their traffic engineering group, to give us a better idea, a better handle, so.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we'll get into the April 2014 Public Works Report. You have in front of you the Water and Wastewater Status Report for April. We have received our certificate of potability for Maryland Department of Environment for three new wells, one at Manchester Farms, and two at the Manchester Valley High School site. Under wastewater, Utility Services Group is continuing the camera work on the gravity sewer mains throughout the town. We've completed about 6,000 feet, and I'll give you a conservative figure that we've probably located 40,000 gallons per day of infiltration coming into our system. We have another long stretch that we're going to be doing, and that's York Street. We know that there's infiltration coming in on York Street, so that's basically the next phase of that contract. Under NPDS and Stormwater and WIP, I attended the Mayor-City Commissioners Meeting on April 17th, in which the mayors and commissioners signed a joint memorandum of intent in regards to sharing the responsibility at an 80-20% split between the county and municipalities. It's now up to the WRCC, the Water Resources Coordination Council, to work out the details on that agreement. Our Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan and our Notice of Intent for the Town Maintenance Facility were completed and were submitted to MDE for review and approval on April the 30th. Under Maintenance Roads and Parks, our winter cleanup were about 80% complete. We still have some areas of repair around town, we've done some blacktop over the last several days. Councilman Pacelli had mentioned about the testing of our light poles at our athletic fields. Actually, I reached a dead end with the company that I was working with, which is Osmos, and they do a lot of pole testing for BG&E. I've explored other companies, unfortunately, they're way out of state. I mean, we're talking Montana, Maine, different locations, so hopefully I can get back on board with Osmos. The problem is, they can't fit us in until the end of this year, so I'm trying to reach out to some other companies on that. Councilman Wilder is working on updating the Joint Use Agreement between the town and the North Carroll Rec Council. Working with the Nature Center in acquiring a Project Open Space Fund for design, construction drawings for the proposed addition, as well as working with Mr. Ed Singer at the Carroll County Health Department in regards to well and septic for the center. I want to congratulate the Nature Center for another very successful Spring Fest. I believe the crowd was estimated at between 400 and 500 visitors back there, that was a nice day, that was a very good event. And also, I want to mention this, that the Manchester Volunteer Fire Department will sponsor their first annual gas engine show coming up this Saturday and Sunday. And I want to personally thank Sharon Hughes for all of her hard work at the Nature Center. It was a pleasure working with you over those many years, Sharon. I mean, the Nature Center, it's a fine facility, and you definitely have a hardworking group back there, and I appreciate working with you. Any questions?
Steve, with respect to the light poles at the Christian Street Park, are you testing for the integrity of the pole beneath the ground?
Correct. What the company would do, would actually dig around the base of the pole, see how much rot has taken place. Also, once that test is complete, then they'll put some type of barrier around the base of the pole and backfill it if they find it, you know, suitable to...
Right. And I think most of you guys are probably aware, but somebody else here is aware, that's something that we've looked at the last couple of years, as, and I don't know if you remember the age of those things, but give or take 35, 37 years.
Correct.
And we got to the point where some of the T bars fell down, so we had lights coming down, we had the T bars coming down. Thank goodness it didn't happen while we had crowds of 400 or 500 people up there, but with the ground being saturated and the age of those things, we want to get a handle on, you know, what the status is of those, you know, large structures that could come down. Do we have anything else for Steve in there? Water wells looking okay, it looks like?
Very good, yes. Static levels of the wells are doing very well, yes.
Chief Hess is not here tonight, I believe Steve is going to deliver the police report as well.
Sure, I'll take care of that. Good evening, mayor and council members. The Manchester Police Department responded to 56 calls for service in the month of April. Investigations resulted in nine arrests during the month, and we had two minor incidents. One involved a theft at Sheetz. All three suspects were located and arrested. The other involved a larceny in a recovery house on Westminster Street. Let's see, traffic hotspots and enforcements, Park Avenue and York Street during the month of April. After receiving several traffic complaints, we initiated enforcement efforts. The police department gave out 10 state citations and 24 warnings were issued, and they did receive a lot of positive feedback from the community members in that area. They did attend and participated and assisted with the Manchester Baseball League's Opening Day event, and on the back of the report, Chief Hess has attached the event schedule, which is coming up. One thing to note, that the Manchester Police Department and the Hampstead Manchester Auxiliary Police Department were at Charles Quest Nature Center Spring Fest, and of course, as you see, Chief Hess has the tractor show listed, and also, May 18th is the Cascade Lake Triathlon that our officers are going to be part of, and then we have the Memorial Day Catherine's Calls Run and Walk. That's it.
Steve, any questions about the police report? I know we say it almost every month, though, but if there's feedback out there on traffic hotspots that we're missing, we are keeping an inventory of the traffic hotspots around town, and the police are having an ongoing effort to monitor these areas and address the issues appropriately. We've been getting some good feedback on that, and I think the issue's been going down, so things have been going well in the police department. If you haven't had a chance to meet Chief Hess yet, knock on the door during business hours, he's usually there. I think that's it. All right, moving right along. Ordinance 217, town budget has a static, the same tax rate, .216 on every $100 of assessed value. It's introduced last month, and it's up for discussion. No public comments during the public hearing. We have a motion to approve ordinance 217, which is the fiscal year 2015 budget.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 217 for the FY15 budget.
Second it.
Motion is second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have a budget for another year, we can keep paying employees and keep the doors open, the lights on. Special thanks to Steve Miller, Kelly Baldwin, Chief Hess, everybody up here, the department heads in town. I know this is something we say every year, and many of you might not hear it, but these budgets are extraordinarily tough to compile, they're very tight, and the people that are in this room and some that are not in this room spend a lot of hours and put a lot of care into trying to keep these tax rates as low as we can while keeping the value of the services as high as we can. So, I think we are, and John, don't quote me on this one, I think we are, in Carroll County, we have the second lowest tax rate for any municipality that has a police department. I think Hampstead is the only one that is lower by, what is it, two cents now? If that, less than two cents. But Hampstead, as anyone who's driven up and down through 30 knows, has a much different atmosphere in terms of the commercial development, right? So this is almost exclusively a residential development, a residential municipality, so to have a town police department and be able to do all the things we do and keep the tax rate where it is, is commendable, and it's really the folks, you know, over here at the table and out in the field every day to do it. All right, ordinance 217, that was the good news. And not that this is bad, but the, kind of do these in conjunction. Ordinance 218 is the water rate, and the water and sewer rates are enterprise funds, meaning they need to balance, you know, every year. And we do what we can to, again, keep those low, but there's only so much we can do when the cost drivers of treating water and giving it to the houses and then treating sewer, you know, continually go up. So, ordinance 218, we're introducing tonight, that will be voted on June 3rd, am I correct, Kelly? And ordinance, and that changes the water rate from $2.75 per thousand gallons to $3 per thousand gallons, and changes the residential unit charge from $15 to $17. So that's 218. 219, I have here, same place. 219, if someone can give me, here, I got it. Effectively does the same thing on the sewer side, changes the per thousand gallon charge from 550 to 575, and the unit charge from $20 to $22. So those are introduced tonight, we'll have a public hearing on June 3rd, and go to notice. Next item on the agenda is introduction and discussion of Old Town Development by Mr. Marty Hill and his group. If you guys don't mind coming up, that way folks at home can hear, while they're making their way up, or Mr. Hill's making his way up. It's important to note, this is not anything we have, is not beneficially, I guess, presented to the town, we don't have plans, this is really an opportunity for these folks to talk about their ideas for, you know, what they think they could do with that property, some of which is inside town, some of which is not currently inside of town.
I'd like to just start off and tell you a little bit about who we are, and we operate as Woodhaven Building and Development. We've been developing in Carroll County, Southern PA, now for 40 years. The ownership of Woodhaven is myself, my daughter, and my son. We all live here in the area, somewhere between 30 and Limeboro, and been here, they've been here all their life, and I've been here a good part of mine. We have with us tonight, in addition to Jen Bubsek, Jim Pyatt, Jim has been our development coordinators, worked through projects with Manchester and just about all the other towns and the county agencies over the years. We've worked together for how many years now, Jim? 24, 25. How old's Evan?
25.
Okay. We have with us also Marty Hackett. Marty has worked with us for a long time. Marty is the principal of CLSI, our engineering planning firm. They also worked with us on Section 1 and Section 2 of Halley Hill, so they have good understanding of working with the town, and I think we've worked well with Steve and Michelle and the rest of the town people over the years. The property that we're here to just discuss with you this evening consists of the Lippi Farm, which is south of town, on the west side of Hanover Pike. The portion of the farm that was on the east side of Hanover Pike is now where Manchester Valley High School is, and our family gifted that to the county for that school site. The other portion of the property that we're talking about tonight is a community called Old Town. It's been a recorded subdivision in the town for 36 years, 30 some years, never been improved, but it's been in the town and recorded and paying taxes for all those years. And what we'd like to do is present to you some thoughts we have about how we can move forward on combining those two properties on the west side of Hanover Pike in a manner that we think would be advantageous to everyone, the town, and to us, and to the community at large. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Marty Hackett, and maybe if we could turn the lights down, and people want to turn around, he has a PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening. I'm just passing out a little outline for the followers of this, so I appreciate it. As Marty said, the Old Town subdivision, they come by, keep what they have building and development, the property as formerly known as the Lippi Farm, as Marty already said, part of that farm is donated to the school board, to the actual Man Valley High School. The remaining portion of the... This plaque here is a reported plaque of the Old Town subdivision, that sits Charmel Drive is in this location here, and the portion of the Lippi Farm, which is to the north. This project was reported back in 1978. It consists of 40 lots, and as Marty said, the tax bill has been paid on all 40 lots since 1978. And we're estimating that to be a person, a couple hundred thousand dollars in tax bill, and then pay next year's compound portion over the years. Jimmy, you can put it down, put it down. The master plan, Carroll County master plan, we fall within the area, the growth area of Manchester. This is the composite plan, this one near the combination of the county's master plan and the environment, and also the Manchester town corporate limits. The project is, this location right here, no, I'm sorry, this piece right here is the Lippi Farm, and this is the recorded Old Town subdivision. The Lippi Farm is not even incorporated town limits at this time, but it does have a master planned street that I'll talk more about as we get going, I'll come back to that, but it's lies within the county at that point in time. This is the area in white that is the Lippi Farm, which is not incorporated, as you can see in much better on that map. What we would like to do is combine the properties. We've got the master planned street as shown on the map, which is in the Lippi Farm, is trying to figure out a way to build it from Southwest Avenue, Southwest Avenue, extending down opposite Maple Grove Road. It's a lighted intersection, controlled intersection, and you've got one access, you've got one there instead of having another location. Probably we're not considering warranty under that location, and we think we can design a roadway that's safe at that intersection to accommodate the traffic. This is the surrounding area that that road will accommodate. As you can see, there's many houses back there that utilize that road to the controlled Instead of using the Charmel Drive, which is not a controlled intersection. What we propose, providing the project, this layout shows the 40 lots, and the 40 lots, we said we already got recorded lots of Old Town that are already accounted for for water, sewer, we'd like to reconfigure that plaque and incorporate the Lippi Farm to do, get the same density, not any more lots, so there's no more impact to the town, and it gives us the ability to construct the road to the location of Maple Grove. We think that's a real win-win for everybody, the community obviously to the property. Like I said, the Old Town subdivision is there with 40 lots, we'd like to modify it and come up with the same 40. These lots are larger, they're basically roughly a half acre and larger, some of the lots shown here are even excessively. The intersection, we look at this close, and we think schematically, we could certainly get a roadway design, same access both sides, and it would be a single modification required to that location, for access to that. This is the old high building, that is the pump station, that was previously needed to the town from the former Docus family, which owned the Old Town subdivision back Old Town, you see, we're already in the sewer service area, are the water service area, the white, as it is incorporated in the town, those maps will just get amended accordingly. We'll get a shade of blue, and on the sewer map, it's the same situation. This is all in the planned community, in planned service area, as far as a growth area, and that's our proposal to bring in, on how we can get a master planned street built that we think viable and will service a lot of area, a lot of the community, and we believe that by reconfiguring the lots and not creating any more impact, the 40 that are originally reported, we just think that's the win-win right now. And then the only other thing, what we're requiring now would be for us to be able to annex that piece of the Lippi property, in order to do so, and do the work with the town, and follow petition to annex that piece of property to report. Are there any questions?
Jim, isn't there a small stream or wetland in there someplace?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And you have a plan about that, I assume?
That's correct. I think we can avoid it.
Okay.
That's the most favorable way.
Yeah.
But the town would annex that piece in, so we would then have that wetland?
Well, no, it's not. The wetlands are actually...
No.
The parts of the wetland area down the front is part of Old Town. There may be some that goes up into the stream area here. That would be open space in a community itself. Looks likely it's going to be a forest conservation area, reforestation area, that kind of thing. You have a question, sir?
Well, I noticed you have a private road there on the side, and you're pulling it down.
We would maintain access to the legal construction. This road here would be tied into the existing road, or the new proposed road. And that's something that we would leave to our council, we would bounce it up to handle that, or if it's a question of... If the weather issues with... We don't know at this time. We don't know if we could handle it, control it management in some cases, add to it, modify. We have to provide water quality, and that's through the design and engineering process that's got to go through. This is a very lengthy process. We have to abide by all those local, state, you know, kind of regulations. We might overcome it at that time. We don't have any impact as far as the road alignment or anything else. We have very, we wouldn't anticipate any rain, and it's probably the most lengthy thing that would be... We want to be there as a common... And the side courses to Hanover Pike. And I think we would like to try to make some improvements on that, but there's, there would be no plan to take that out or try and modify it, other than to repair where it's located.
Well, it is a, it is an act ecosystem that does provide the benefits, water quality benefits from the test today, which is the headwaters of George's Run. Right across from the pond where your road is proposed, is that a lot there? That narrow piece right directly across from the pond, across the road? No, to the left side. Right there, right there, that piece there.
No, it's not a lot there.
Is that open space, or...
We don't know. It's not.
Does anybody from the council have any questions for Mr. Hackett, Mr. Pyatt?
One, Mr. I could forgive me because I had that air vent over top, and I couldn't hear everything you were saying. But I heard you mention benefit to both parties a couple times. Would you summarize for me again, please, the benefits? The benefit to the town?
Go back to the other one. This master planned street, probably the only way it's going to physically get built is if it's combined with some sort of development. So in order to do that, we also felt that the configuration or the alignment for the master planned street would be much more safe in this location where it's controlled access point already, and we modify the signal and have one intersection versus an additional intersection here. And what that allows for is you see this area, there's a lot of homes back there and streets that tie together, that would be able to utilize that roadway and come out on a railroad Route Thirty at a controlled intersection, making a left-hand turn, that kind of thing, instead of coming out Charmel Drive, which currently does not have a light. You know, it's being able to build a road segment that's been on the master plan for years at new tax dollars, taxpayers' expense, except for the development. We think that's a real win-win for everyone. Probably the only way that it would ever be built. But as Marty said, Charmel Drive, if you come out of there during morning peak traffic, you can't, there's no way you could ever make a left-hand turn and get out of there. And if you come out in evening peak, there's just about no way that you could make a left-hand turn. I think I might have my rights in motion. Now, your right, but any other benefit, you know, what's rare is, in this situation, normally my client's sitting there saying, we'll get any lot you can physically get based on the zoning. And the density could be a lot more than what we have shown. What we're saying is, is that we have forty recorded lots today that are already accounted for in the adequate public facilities, is to not ask for any more than that, but just reconfiguring to make them nicer, and reconfigure the roadway to encompass both properties to get that master planned street built.
Marty, what is the zoning? They might be different from the two properties.
R fifteen is here, I believe, and the R twenty sits back in here. Another benefit that we think it would provide is, we would, with running the sewer through here, we would provide access points for additional properties that are in that Charmel Drive area, plus we could provide a connection for the church up on the top there, and some of those other houses up along the top, just by running a line or putting an extra connection, and so that they, it could be, the line could be gotten into. There are engineering details that we haven't gotten into in any specificity, but we've looked at it, and they seem to be logical things that we can add that do not impact our cost significantly, but do provide an advantage to the town for different opportunities. That configuration. Jim, go back to the intersection, if you would. The reason why that intersection is, or that road is so twisted right there, that is to avoid the wetlands in that area. And that's, that's been one of the reasons why owners prior to us have never done anything. The owner that we purchased had gone probably at least fifteen, eighteen years ago, came to us, wanted access through the Lippi property, and couldn't, you know, just couldn't get what they needed at that time. Since that time, when the state did the road improvements for Manchester Valley and created that new intersection at Maple Grove, they also lowered that pipe that goes under Route Thirty. And the significance of that is that by lowering that pipe, it allows that area to drain much better. And I think fairly certain, though we have to identify, that is pulling some of the wetlands in, because it was the invert of that pipe is most likely what caused that wetland to develop in there, because it poned or held the water on the west side of the Hanover Pike, and couldn't get across. But they did lower that pipe, so it did drain, but it's still wetlands out there in front. And our plan is to avoid.
So what is the alternative if the town were to choose not to annex that piece of property, then what's the alternative?
We just go back to the Old Town and reconfigure that.
So my question, excuse me, I have a question. If you're coming out southwestern to the dead end where it meets the cornfield at Charmel, that's where it's going to continue to go directly through?
It'll pick up there, and, you know, where that, leave it where it was, it's about, that right there where our road terminates, that should be southwestern.
Okay. And how much, how much area or property is between the houses on Charmel and the houses you're building and the road that you're proposing to include?
Are you referring to this?
Yes.
These lots are all, they're a half acre and above. Their distance is basically a couple hundred feet, yard depth. And then the houses come up the hill on Charmel. Correct. Yeah, these houses are all higher than these located. You're looking at, I mean, the elevation difference was probably twenty to thirty feet. But would you consider the fact that, the way you've got, just where you had your finger on there, those houses going down Charmel Drive, then they would have Charmel Drive in the front and the new roof in the backyard, so to speak? Well, these houses here will be facing that way. That road's recorded today. That road, that road is recorded on a plot already.
So it'd be backyards facing each other?
Yes.
Backyards.
This is backyard here, and these houses would be facing that way, their rear door would be here.
So this...
So they'd be facing the road?
Each house would be facing the road?
Yeah, tradition.
Unlike Dale's building over here on the street. Do you anticipate this would reduce the traffic currently on Charmel?
Certainly. Because people would take the route they can get out with a controlled intersection.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I don't live on Charmel, but leaving Charmel, you know, to get towards the high school in the morning is a little bit of an adventure. Or in the evening, for that matter.
Yeah, I go back out there every morning and back south going into the high school and take it out.
Yeah. Which, you know, unfortunately, most of that problem really is, of course, there's, you know, there's people in Manchester, but most of it's people that come through Manchester, right? It's not really...
I've studied the traffic accidents that were proposed in the kingdom right there on that intersection, because with their many years, and people coming down both of those hills, right down to the bottom, there've been so many accidents there. Do you know how many accidents there have been? Do you know the number? I don't know. What I'm saying is just, there's still a lot of things there, I haven't studied.
Do you guys have any?
We have to go through a long process. And we're, you know, this is not something that comes in overnight. I mean, we have to go through and look at the intersection, we have to work with a traffic consultant. Anyway, we look at all those, we're designing intersection modifications, the signals required to make it work as a four-way intersection versus a three-way and so on.
All right, I think we, you know, in the interest...
Let me just one more question.
Sure.
So everybody understands, again, I want to get back, and forgive me for repeating myself, the alternative, not building this road means forty lots coming out of Charmel.
No. We have, we'd still come out on Route Thirty, it's just that we don't make the connection to Southwest, and the lots are smaller.
Meaning not the reduction of traffic on Charmel?
It would have, it would have no impact during Charmel, because we wouldn't tie into Southwest. It's the tie into Southwest that alleviates the traffic flow on Charmel.
Do you anticipate that you would come out, would you still come out at Maple Grove, or do you anticipate that you would come out at the top then?
No, this is where we, this is what we're proposing. We would just come out at Maple Grove, because you have the traffic light there, and it's a, if this goes from a three-way to a four-way intersection, we'd have to redesign the signal. Did you refer? Again?
Under Councilman Wilder's scenario, if the town said no to the annexation...
Do we still come out there?
Okay, that's what my question was.
But it just wouldn't connect to southwestern, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
If the connection to Southwest is actually in the portion that is the Lippi Farm, that is not in the town.
I think, in the interest of time, unless you guys have anything else, or someone in the council has a question. So for members of the community, so you're aware, as Mr. Hackett said, it's a long process. This is the first, you know, really, time that they brought something to the town, to show to the town, to the community. So their, their next step would really be to, I guess, move forward with their plan, and then we'll go to planning and zoning and all the, a lot of the questions the community had in terms of specifically what would happen with engineering, with traffic, and with the pond and stuff, you know, is really, you know, it's, a lot of it's planning and zoning would have to be sorted out. And those are public meetings, and there'll be plenty of chances to ask questions. But thank you, folks, for coming in, presenting to the council.
Thank you. That's informative.
Okay. You know, I believe we have folks here that are, we have an election coming up. As everyone's aware from the signs, and we have a couple of local candidates here that would like an opportunity to address the council and the residents of Manchester through the forum. So I'll start in the order I have them on here, which is not alphabetical. Mr. Wetz?
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council folks for allowing us to come over here and say a few words to everybody tonight. And when elected on June the 24th, I hope that you see more of this, because that's what we're lacking now. There's a true lack of communication between the municipalities and the county government offices. And we need to fix that. A little bit about myself, I've been involved in the fire service here in Carroll County for thirty-seven years. I'm currently the president of the Pleasant Valley Fire Company. I retired from Baltimore County Fire Department after a thirty-year career there. Got two children that were both raised here. I've lived here all my life. My mom and dad retired from the Carroll County Public Schools. My daughter is currently a first-grade teacher at Running Meade Elementary. Three grandchildren, six, four, and three. I had the four and three today, so you're lucky I'm here. But I am very concerned about the future and where we're going here in Carroll County. And I think there's a focus right now that is not on what it should be. And that are the issues that we need to address on pretty much a daily basis. Public safety, public education, and infrastructure. And you saw some of that tonight in the previous presentation. We've got a lot of issues that need to be focused on and not what you have seen lately in the news. So I don't want to take up a whole lot of your time. I do want to tell you that I truly believe that there needs to be more of a connection between our municipalities and county government. There certainly isn't any of that now. I spent the evening last week in Limeboro. I asked those folks, when's the last time that you saw a commissioner? And a gentleman in the back row raised his hand, and he said, I know exactly when it was. It was September of 2010. That's unacceptable. It is my intent to, if they will allow, and maybe they'd be tired of me, but it would be my intent to be over here on a regular basis, have communication. I've stopped in, I've talked with Steve on a number of occasions already. I've spent time here in town with the Manchester Area Merchants Association, which is a fantastic organization that is doing a lot of great things here in this town. So I don't, with an interest of time, I could stand up here until like, I don't know, ten-thirty, eleven o'clock. But I won't, I just ask for your support. I've got a website, very easy, stevewance.org. I would certainly appreciate it if you would pass the word. And truly, the most important thing that you can do is everyone has got to vote on June the 24th. That's the most important thing. Regardless of who you're supporting, we have got to get out the vote. Historically, the primary elections are, have a very low voter turnout. In Carroll County, that is the election, the primary election. So I ask for your support. You've seen some of my signs around town. I would certainly welcome any of you to reach out to me. I've got more signs. And again, it's important that you vote on June the 24th, and stevewance.org. And again, thank you very much for allowing us a few minutes here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeLanara?
I also want to thank the mayor and the council members for giving me the opportunity to come in and speak a little bit tonight. The only people that probably talk more than a politician is a lawyer, and you're getting both. So I'm really going to restrain myself. I've never run for office before in my life, but I believe very strongly that we need a change in the way that we're handling criminal... we need a change in the way that we're handling criminal prosecution of cases in this county. Um, and I decided to run after seeing the changing face of crime that we're seeing in the county as well as a really dramatic increase in drug overdose deaths in the county. Not many people know, but there was a two-hundred-and-sixty-three percent increase in drug overdose deaths in the county in, in two thousand and twelve. Um, it, it, it's a, it's a major issue and it's why people are kicking in your doors when you're not here and stealing, and we have to get a handle on that. I've been working in the courts in this county for over fifteen years, both as a prosecutor and private attorney. I've handled thousands of criminal cases in, in the county. I have, uh, served as a former senior states attorney for Carroll County, a former assistant attorney general for Maryland, and I've been teaching law enforcement for over fifteen years. I regularly teach FBI, ATF, Maryland State Police, and the National Fire Academy I've been working with for about fifteen years. Um, I will tell you that for me, uh, one of the biggest testaments as to not only why we need change, but like Mr. Wance was talking about the need for partnership, is evident in the endorsements. I have received the endorsement from the Carroll County Fraternal Order of Police, the Maryland Fraternal Order of Police, and the Office of State Fire Marshal, FOP, because like me, uh, they see the need that there needs to be a change in the partnership between the prosecution and law enforcement, and, uh, that's something that I have a history of bringing, they recognize, and something that's so important in dealing with our crime and drug issues. I, I will also tell you that one of the reasons I had asked, and probably tell I've asked from a long time to come before, uh, the council, is I too believe it's extremely important because a lot of the initiatives that I wanna bring, uh, is going to involve not only a, a chief has, but it's gonna involve the council. Uh, one of my initiatives that I really wanna target is repeat offenders because you find a very small portion are the ones that constantly are committing the same crimes. And sometimes they're serious crimes and sometimes they're what we would call nuisance crimes, but they're serious to you when you're dealing with them. And I wanna be able to identify these individuals in each community, let them know ahead of time that they're on the list and that they're gonna have a zero tolerance approach when they get charged. And that's where our, our local police understand when they do, and they do the effort to charge those crimes that something's really gonna happen to them. And so that's really something significant to me. I do intend to come back and work with the council and help identify those or listen to those concerns, um, and, and that's why I'm running. And, and I would also tell you, if you wanna learn more about me, I have a website at votedeleonardo.com, but certainly I'll be here afterwards to answer any questions. But again, thank you so much to the council for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Stonka?
I wanna thank the mayor and the council for having me here tonight. Uh, my name's Josh Stonka, I'm a candidate for the House of Delegates here in District Five. Uh, District Five is a three-member district now, changed from five A, which is what represented Manchester, Hampstead, Finksburg, and a, a good portion of Carroll County, to a three-member District Five, which is Carroll County north of Liberty Road, uh, so it's a little bit of a change for Manchester. Um, I'm from Manchester, I, I grew up here, attended all the schools all the way through, uh, grew up playing sports in the, in the, uh, up at Manchester and all that too. Um, what I'm looking for, uh, if I'm elected to the House of Delegates, is to focus on local issues. Uh, right now in the House of Delegates, uh, and for representing District Five or all of Carroll County, we don't have anyone that's focusing on local issues, and this has been proven, uh, most recently in the last session. Uh, first and foremost, we had, uh, education money that was left hold, it was hold harmless, it was left on the floor of the House based on their, their vote on the budget. I wanna bring this money that our taxpayers are paying back to Carroll County, uh, so we can incre, improve and increase the, uh, quality of our schools. I'm focused on things like the volunteer gaming bill, which many of you know about, it was, it's a very simple, uh, nonprofit gaming bill, it helps our volunteer fire departments, it helps our, other nonprofits like the Ark of Carroll County, uh, with Carroll County, it's a fundraising, additional fundraising source, uh, that doesn't rely on our taxpayers, that's very important. Uh, it's been seven years, it still hasn't gotten through, uh, in the House of Delegates, uh, House, the, the state senate, senate led by Joe Getty, uh, got it through in each of the last four years. Uh, there was a last-minute bill that was put through this year, uh, they allowed Baltimore City on the bill and this effectively killed the bill. Um, and the reason why is because many of you know the new casino, casino that's going into Baltimore City this year. Um, so we need real leadership, that's what I'm, I'm offering. Uh, I think we need a real change in people that are really representing our community. Uh, we even had some issues with communication that you guys know about with the liquor license board issue that came up this year. Uh, for those of you that don't know, uh, basically the House delegation put a bill in that would re, reestablish the funding source and where it went to for, uh, basically crackdown on underage drinking. Uh, this affects our town councils and our mayors, uh, across Carroll County because the money is actually taken, uh, that was originally established to go to them, it takes it back to a central fund and, uh, to be controlled by the liquor board. Uh, this was a, a, a major issue that made the papers, and the reason why was because it all went through without us ever talking to our, our councils and our mayors. When you're making policy changes that are specifically affecting Carroll County, it's the, uh, it's the, uh, job of the delegates and the state senators that are in there to, uh, make sure we come back to the, the real leaders of our communities, which our, which our town councils are. Um, so that's really what I'm running on, I'm running on local issues. Let's bring, uh, our taxpayers back, taxpayer dollars back to Carroll County, let's put our Carroll County residents first. I think we need change in the House of Delegates, that's why I'm running, like I said, and I appreciate your time, appreciate you guys having me here tonight, and I'll be after as well to, uh, to answer any questions you have. I also have a website, joshustonka.com. Uh, I encourage you to check it out, it has a lot of the bigger issues, uh, and if you have any other questions on specific local issues and how I would address them and deal with them, I encourage you to ask me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other candidates for local office, uh, that we, we missed? Okay. And I'll take questions and comments from the community. First, if somebody signed up, we do ask people, did you sign up?
I did.
You did? If you did, come on.
I'm Wendell Sissler, I live at Charmel Drive.
Do, do, do you mind coming up? I can hear you, but the, the tens of thousands of people at home can't hear you.
It's the tens of thousands.
And I represent the troops, as you see. Uh, no, my name is Wendell Sissler, I live at Charmel Drive in Southwest Boulevard, right on the corner, and, uh, I've lived there for twelve years now. Since I've lived there, the community has grown and grown and grown, what used to be farmland is not anymore, it's all houses, and a whole lot more traffic. Traffic is one of the big issues on Charmel Drive and Southwest. Our town police try to patrol it once in a while, but they don't ever seem to be there when the cars are speeding and don't stop for the stop signs, and the big trucks go rolling through. With all the building, we have enormous amount of trucks, dump trucks, big construction trucks, all travel on that road which was newly paved and put in. The time they finished building, it might need another new road, I'm not too sure, but the speed, what worries me about, a little bit about your development, is the speed of the people that come over Southwest that has a stop sign at Charmel Drive to make a right-hand turn to go down Charmel Drive and then fight the traffic getting out on 30. The problem I see is the speed that they come down over there, if it goes straight on through to a new road, instead of doing forty in a twenty mile zone, they'll probably be doing sixty, traveling right on through and past my neighbor's house right there. Um, I, I just think traffic is a big issue in this plan. If we can somehow control the traffic and, and, uh, I don't, I don't know if raising it from twenty mile an hour to twenty-five via any help, but people do make comments, this is crazy, twenty mile an hour. And it sorta is, but I'm afraid if you make it twenty-five or thirty, then they'll do fifty. So, I'm not sure whether that's a good plan or just having more police protection there. But I'm, I'm very concerned about the traffic on this issue.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else like to, uh, speak? Move on to community reports. Councilman Smith?
Um, I went to the Carroll Cable Commission meeting this week, the franchise are hoping to have it pretty much ironed out by July, so hopefully at the next meeting we'll, well, after that, after my July meeting, then we may know something, so. Other than that, that's all we really worked on this last time.
Okay. Councilman Black?
There's been no change since last, um, time we, we talked, um, there was no meeting in, in April, so we're having one next week.
Okay. Councilman Charlie?
I have nothing to report, though, there is a Mala meeting this, scheduled for this week.
Is it, yeah, is it Thursday at noon?
Thursday at noon.
Dutch Corn.
Dutch Corn. Unfortunately, can't make, I, I'll be in Columbia. Columbia sounds better than, sorry. Uh, Councilman Howe is, is not here tonight, but Councilman...
I'm too. Dutch Corn, right down.
As Stephen said, I've been working with joint use agreement through the town and the North Carolina Rec Council, I'm almost prepared to submit my recommendations for that change. We've been operating under the same joint use agreement for, for many, many years, and it's been a good agreement, but I would like to recommend a few changes, so I'll, I'll bring that to the council, uh, and the town, and, um, maybe make some recommendations on how we can meet with the rec council to get these resolved, because there'll be some changes and there, there may be some conversation, but I'll, I'll make those recommendations and go forward.
Yeah, I, I think that's gonna be good, thank you for doing that. Youth representative, Natalie?
Hi, um, I spoke with Mr. Miller tonight, and as of right now, um, the Environmental Club at Manchester Valley High School will be taking on the project to do the gardens in front of the town. And then also I'd like to really quickly say, uh, congratulations to Manchester Valley's girls lacrosse team, they have brought the first county championship, team championship to Manchester this past week. That's it.
That's it? All right. You're not gonna go down to college choices or anything? Anything else for this group? I know I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn and we have light refreshments afterward.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All right, goodnight, everyone.